All older persons are present with the exception of older person Rayom, who might be joining us a little bit late tonight, as we didn't hear otherwise. Thank you all for being here. Item three on our agenda this evening is the presentation of the colors by the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Honor Guard, who will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent prayer. Invite everyone to please stand.
[inaudible]
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 Dad, this is fun. I did think I liked kayaking.
Well, I'm glad you enjoyed it, but I think it's time to head back in.
Okay. Can we come back?
Sure.
Tomorrow?
Let's wait, Mom. Hey, be careful getting out of the boat.
It's a kayak, Dad.
I'm gonna return the kayak. Just make sure you have everything.
Yep. Can we walk home?
How about a taxi? Two thirty-three North Naval Beach.
It's a short fare from your neighborhood to your naturehood. Visit Discover the Forests dot com to find a neighborhood park or green space near you. Also, find fun activities to do like boating and biking, fort camping and hiking, plus much more. It's all right in your naturehood.
Best day ever.
A public service announcement brought to you by the Pat Hope and the West Forests.
Should I let Tom get seated? Is he here? I'll... There he is. We're gonna move into the item six, is the administration of the Police Department ceremonial oaths of office and badge pinning, excuse me. First, I'd like to invite Sergeant Bradley Burris to the front.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Bradley S. Burris.
Aye, Bradley S. Burris.
Having been duly selected...
Having been duly selected...
To serve as sergeant...
To serve as sergeant...
Of the police department...
Of the police department...
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids...
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And of the state of Wisconsin...
And of the state of Wisconsin...
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge...
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
[applause]
We're gonna call up... Who's doing the badge? Like to call up the individual who's gonna pin Bradley's badge?
[inaudible]
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 Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
And for our second group, I'll invite new police officers Cody Stray, Travis Plowman, Gabriel Contreras, and Donovan Malsum to the front.
Please raise your right hands and repeat after me. Aye, state your names.
Aye, Cody Stray, Malsum.
Having been duly selected...
Having been duly selected...
To serve as an officer...
To serve as an officer...
Of the police department...
Of the police department...
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids...
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And of the state of Wisconsin...
And of the state of Wisconsin...
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge...
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
So can I call forward the badge pinners, please?
[inaudible]
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 Congratulations.
[applause]
[inaudible]
Congratulations, and we wish the new police officers well, and congratulations on your promotion,
Sergeant Burris. Move back to the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so on agenda items that are appearing before us this evening. If you haven't already spoken with an older person, to have time yielded for you to speak, you may speak by or indicate your desire to speak on a particular agenda item by raising your hand, once that agenda item comes before us this evening, in which you'll be invited to speak at the podium. Make sure that the microphone is on. When it's on, it'll have a green light at the base of it, and you'll be allowed to speak for no longer than five minutes. We ask you to state your name and your address for the record. Move on to item number seven, which is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Attachment number one in your packets. Older persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Zerflu. Is there a second? Second by Katna. Any additions or corrections on the minutes? Seeing no request to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item eight on our agenda this evening is my report. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here or watching from home. The Mayor's Youth Council welcomed eleven new members at their meeting this month from both Lincoln and Assumption High Schools. We're excited to have them part of the group. We kicked off a new Mayor's Youth Council year with a tour of the Aquatic Center development. With this project being so near and dear to the youth council, they are choosing to focus on the Aquatic Center for their annual project this year. They're working on what areas of the project they'd like to focus on, but are considering assisting with the ongoing fundraising efforts, programmatic input, as well as assisting with the donor recognition aspects of the project. The Beautification Council has continued to work with other members in the community on a monarch encouragement project, and they had another natural habitat garden dedicated as a monarch waystation. Their next on their agenda is preparing for the upcoming holiday season, and once again, the council will feature a tree in the annual Christmas Tree Walk at the Historical Museum in the first part of December. The holiday evergreen kissing balls will also be out again just in time for Rekindle the Spirit at the end of November, and they've also been working on bringing awareness to the importance of the waterfall feeding ban in our area. The Beautification Council's also looking, always looking for new members. If you or someone you know is interested in being a part of the projects that promote pride in beautifying our community, please contact my office. The Parks and Rec Commission continues to discuss Robinson Park, in which after last night's meeting, the city's planning staff will prepare a public engagement proposal for consideration by the commission, and this will set the stage for ongoing planning for the future of Robinson Park. They also had a full agenda discussing the skate park and a number of other items last night. The Airport Commission has requested annexation of the city for a small portion of airport property. This is necessary to achieve the fire suppression that will be installed in the to-be-constructed hangar. Again, this hangar is paid entirely for by state aid, which the project cost is just over $2 million. In the area of aquatics, we've been giving a number of tours, as was just mentioned on with the youth council. We've also been touring donors and other prospective supporters to the facility over the last number of weeks, and will continue to do so while they're permitting. So if individuals of the public wish to have a tour of the facility, please contact myself or city staff Joe Terry. East Riverbank, we're hosting ribbon cutting in celebration of the completion of the Phase One East Riverbank Project and Riverbank Stabilization and the reopening of Demet's Park. This event will take place this coming Saturday from 11:30 to 1:00, in which we'll be working with the Chamber of Commerce on the rededication and celebration of that. The event will feature demonstrations of park amenities such as the canoe and kayak launch with a local vendor who does river tours will be demonstrating canoes and kayaks, and the launch itself brings, has donated a bike repair station, and they'll be demonstrating the use of that. And then the donors to the fitness park stations will also be on hand to give demonstrations of those stations. The designers will also be on hand to walk folks through the park, and before, while supplies last, we're gonna be offering a small picnic for a small, for refreshments at the park before, during the event as well. East Grand Avenue, at the beginning of the month, we hosted a kind of a block party of sorts with the area of businesses that were affected by the closure during the reconstruction of East Grand Avenue, in which we celebrated with the chamber the opening of Phase One, and recognized the local businesses that were impacted by the construction. Very well-attended event, and I believe the video is posted out there by community media where we had speakers from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, our local state representatives, as well as Chamber and Convention Visitors Bureau folks. Phase two of the project and the opening of East Grand from Lincoln Street to A Street is tentatively scheduled to open next week. The YMCA Boys and Girls Club Project downtown and the VA Clinic continues great progress. I personally took a tour late last week, and occupancy is set for March 17th of the Boys and Girls Club and YMCA spaces, with the VA Clinic to be open at the end of February. Shortly after, around April 1st, I understand the current VA Clinic will be demolished, and the rest of the site work will continue. On the 2020 city budget, I'll be sending a draft budget around to all the older persons tomorrow, so watch for that, and I understand finance is looking at meeting next week to discuss the budget. The Rapids Rediscovered Housing Program, city staff and I continue to make contact with the potential owners of vacant properties, as well as those that might be interested in constructing a home on those properties using that city single-family home incentive program. In the area of attended, hosted, and participated, in the last month, we took delivery of our new fire engine at the fire department, so we dedicated that with a number of former retired fire department staff, so that was pretty cool to see a lot of those folks come back to celebrate the dedication of that engine. We held the Metalko Groundbreaking earlier this month, where we hosted representatives from that company, as well as their parent company, from Canada here in the city to talk about the project and what they hope to accomplish through their investment, $80 million investment here in the city. The Ho-Chunk Nation Legislative Meeting, where I presented an update on city projects that are happening, as well as potential donor opportunities for them to support the Aquatic Center and other projects happening within the city. National Walk to School Day was held a couple of weeks ago, and we had a great turnout, not only from community members that supported, but I think the Sheriff's Department had representatives, as well as the National Guard, among others, to walk students to school, both at Mead Elementary and Howe Schools. Clean Green Action held a climate forum where I was speaking on behalf of the city and the various climate-friendly initiatives that the city is undertaking in its operations. River Kings held their season opener earlier this month, and had the dedication, as I mentioned, of the Butterfly Hill, the monarch waystation area, and then hosted two, or a coffee with the mayor session earlier this month at Four Star Restaurant, and I've got one coming up, the 22nd, at the Lowell Center, so if individuals wish to join me for coffee and have casual conversation to talk about what's on their mind, feel free to join me at the Lowell Center. I believe that one is at 9:30 in the morning on the 22nd. Ribbon cuttings, we held, of course, Grand Avenue I mentioned, as well as the new Hometown Pharmacy, which worked to preserve a number of the jobs that were lost in Shopko's pharmacy closure, so it's nice to see a small business start as a result of that unfortunate closure of that company. Area of Proclamations issued one on White Cane Day, October 15th, which is today, to bring awareness of the importance of the white cane tool of independence for the blind and celebrate their achievements. And finally, employee anniversaries acknowledge Greg Walosik on his 15th year with the city. On October 11th, he's a heavy equipment operator in the Streets Department. Tune into my radio show tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. on WFHR or their livestream via their Item number nine on our agenda this evening is the first reading of an ordinance deleting Sections 22.09, Parent 2, Parent B, and 23.08, Parent 1 of the Municipal Code, eliminating Class A beer and Class A liquor license quota restrictions as recommended by the Finance and Property Committee at its meeting on October 1st, 2019. Attachment number two in your packets. Older persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Coth. And a second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Older person Katna, you're first.
Yeah, I would just ask if the city clerk could give an explanation of what this change would mean to the public.
Sure. This is for Class A liquor licenses, both beer and liquor, Class A alcohol, meaning this would be for any alcohol that is consumed away from the premise from which it is sold, gas stations, convenience stores, that type of thing. We currently have, we're over our quota on one, and we are approaching our quota on the other one. So this is a municipal ordinance, not a state ordinance. The state does not have a quota.
Further requests to speak? Seeing none, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Seven ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Item 10 is the first reading of an ordinance creating Section 25.34, Parent 2 of the Municipal Code, providing for a ban on the feeding of waterfall on the public property as recommended by the Legislative Committee at its meeting on September 17th, 2019. Attachment number three in your packets. Older persons, what are your wishes regarding that item? Older person Kellogg, you're first.
I just had a few questions. I'm in favor of the ban, but I was just wondering if there was, we said that there's an exception at the zoo, which I can understand, but I wonder if we put a clause in there unless designated, that maybe in the future, I have no idea, there might be another area that we would like to have or be able to let families go and feed the waterfalls based on certain types of food that they can give them and so forth, and if we have unless designated, we don't have to come back to the ordinance, and it could just be approved. And the other question I have is, what would be the fine? Just so the people understand that if we pass this, what might be the fine? Because it's gonna take a period of time, because people are so used to feeding the geese, and I think they should understand or be knowledgeable about what the fine would be. So those are the two questions or comment and question I have.
Since city staff isn't probably here to speak on that, I would, off the top of my head, I would think that it would be similar to the way we sign for the leashed or unleashed dog areas, or the litter or the loitering issues that we have, and currently the signage that we've got in those park spaces, so I would just offer that as a, as an idea that probably would follow those, those notification and communication matters, I would, I would think. Older person Coth, you're next.
I just wanted to take a moment to see if there's anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on the waterfall ban. I'll yield time to the gentleman in the back.
Dave, you want to come to the podium, please? And just make sure the... It does not. Try again.
No.
Yes.
Thank you for the time. We have a lot of natural beauty in Wisconsin Rapid Center, Wisconsin, not the least of which is the river and those creatures that go with it. In this case, ducks. Feeding them is not doing them any service. I have a couple articles here, one of which is from the state of New York, that lists things, reasons not to feed them, poor nutrition, increased hybridization, water pollution, delayed migration, concentration at unnatural sites, overcrowding, spread of disease, and costly management. The last one brings to mind the problem of the ducklings falling in the catch basins. I've pulled a few of them out in my own time. Pulling them out is one thing, it's the ones we don't find that bother me, and so I would ask you to approve this ordinance. Thank you.
The persons, the floor is open for a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Rayom or Coth? We got it on the record as Coth.
Tom spoke up, let him have it.
I don't know if the clerk can do that. Any further requests to speak, older persons? Seeing no further requests to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 11 is the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 8.20, Schedule of Sewer Charges to provide for a minimum monthly charge for eight-inch meters as recommended by the Wastewater Treatment Commission. Attachment number four. Ryan, did you want to speak to the, to the item? Or Ryan's available, I guess, if anyone has any questions.
I guess, yeah, that would be fine if there's questions.
Older persons, what are your wishes regarding this item? A motion by Rayom. Is there a second? Second by Coth. Any requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 12 is the first reading of the ordinance repealing and recreating Chapter 46 of the Municipal Code, the Sign Code, as recommended by the Planning Commission at its meeting on October 7th, 2019. Attachment number five in your packets. As the Chair of the Planning Commission, I'll speak to that item in that, this item was taken up at the Planning Commission meeting, where we held our public hearing just in the last number of weeks, and at this point, of course, the commission is requesting your adoption of that. We did have, did have an open house in this room in early September, I believe, where members of the public were invited to attend, and actually we had a pretty decent showing. We had representatives of the Chamber of Commerce and other interested folks who had questions or sought information about the particular items, so with that, I would open the floor for any action. Older person Kellogg, you're first.
I just, I'm in favor of this as well, but I'm just curious about some of the, I have some questions, just a clarification. On page six on the top, it talks about the following types of signs are not specifically prohibitive. They talk about vehicle signs and off-premises signs. What, what are, what would be an off-premises sign? I don't understand that.
A good example might be the former Rapids Mall Centralea sign over here at Hale and in the expressway. The signage that's displayed there is not owned by that property owner, the city owns that property, so that would be technically by definition an off-premise, off-premises sign. Trying to think of some other good examples. Any sign that's essentially not on the property, which it's advertising or, or marketing.
So what, what would be a vehicle sign?
Um, it's not there anymore because I think it's been prohibited. The ordinance control officer's taken care of it, and that was the Gary's Towing at the corner of Chestnut and Eighth. Used to be a sign advertising a business that's not based there. Another one could be Steve's Plumbing. Those, I believe, are viewed as vehicle signs by the definitions in this ordinance.
All right. Then the next section, number six, it talks about a sign may not be attached to a tree or painted on rocks. I've seen in some cities where they have a large boulder where high school kids or people paint every year something on it as part of their class or whatever, that, that means that we wouldn't be able to do something like that, or the high school kids wouldn't be able to do that?
Um, I, my first reaction would be that it would probably be a free speech piece and less of a sign. I think from a, from a ordinance perspective, it would just prohibit a business from using that as a, a marketing vehicle or a, you know, a marketing sign. What was the number on that again?
That was number six.
Page six?
Oh, no, it's 46.14, number six.
Okay.
And then I had a question on that same section, number 10. A sign shall not be, will, shall not emit an audible sound, odor, or any visible matter. What, I don't understand that.
I wouldn't know if we've got a good example of that, probably why it's prohibited, but I would say, I would suggest it's, it's similar to the flashing reader board signs, that they might be equipped with a speaker or some sort of...
Steam, like a fake steam.
Oh, a fake steam or a fog or something?
All right.
Your imagination, Sue, is endless.
On the next page, number four, it's, what's it? Says general standards. There's, there, there shall not be no transition between messages, like no traveling, scrolling, or dissolving, or fading. I've seen some of these signs where they fade in and out.
Yeah.
I mean, are we going to say that, I don't, that won't be allowed then?
That's correct. And I think most of the electronic reader board signs had that in there because previously they were handled by conditional use. And the conditional use specified those conditions that they had to agree to based upon their request. So I believe it's codifying or bringing that into the sign ordinance. So, yeah, if you're seeing that, it's probably prohibited and it's in violation of their conditional use permit. Would be my assumption on that.
Another one above it, number one, said electronic message display must be equipped with technology the sign owner can use to program lighting levels to comply with the lighting standards. Is this, I would hope this could be grandfathered. I mean, we might have signs now, I don't know, that are too bright in the evening. And that technology should be...
Yeah, if they've been, in this case, if they've been approved through a conditional use process, that conditional use would stand. I don't believe there's, unless there's some conflict with violations of that where they may have lost their rights within the conditional use. But that would be, I don't know, Attorney Shill, do you have anything to add? But I'm guessing, based upon my recollection, we, all of those were contained within the conditional use, those five areas there, the lighting, adjusting for the various day parts.
On page 10, I guess I'm concerned to 46.22, number 10. Sometimes we'll have signs promoting runs and other things than the city. And sometimes they're up well before the event or they're, they stay up beyond the event. Is there any time limit that a sign could be posted prior to any event and then taken down? For example, we have this with our banners across the highway. They can be put up just prior to the event, like a week and a half or so. And they have to be taken down a few days after the event. It'd be interesting to see if, if there's a time limit that we could put for signs because sometimes you get, especially by entrance signs that we have into the city. They're beautiful signs. We spent $20,000 per sign. And they're attractive. They represent the city. But then all of a sudden, we get these other signs, events all around them. And it takes away from the appearance of that entrance sign. So it'd be interesting if this language could include time limits that, for number 10, could be put up prior and taken down after so they're not sitting there for a long time. And those are the questions I have.
Yeah, and maybe if there's a motion, since the floor is still open, it could be under, on that last point that you raised, time limitation is listed as none. The Commission actually did not discuss this area, so I don't know what the Commission's belief would be. But I think the spirit, remembering what people, the preferences of the Commission, I would suggest that they would share that opinion. But, so right now, yeah, there's no limitation. So if you wanted to make a motion, you could have that section reflect some statement of time.
I would like. And then there was another one on top of the page, number four. Says sidewalk signs shall not have other attention-getting devices such as balloons, ribbons, and so... Well, is it just sidewalk signs? What about other signs? Like, I've seen some have a celebration and they have these flags flying and so forth. And they might stay up for a long time. It's not an event. They're just trying to promote their business. I think that's something that needs to be addressed, that it's not just sidewalk signs. So I think there's areas, I think it's a great, I think it's good to have this signage. But I think there, just for clarification, I have a few more and I don't want to take the time. But I like to suggest that this be reviewed again with more specificity as to timing and types of signs and so forth. So it's, in my opinion, more, better definitions and more clarity. So I'd like to send this back to the committee.
So the motion would be to refer this item back to the Planning Commission?
Right.
So motion by Kellogg, is there a second? Second by Raum or a second by Kubasak? We'll have to rule on some of these here, whoever gets the button first. Alder Person, Raum, did you want to speak to your motion? Okay, or your second, I should say. Any other requests to speak? Any other areas in particular that you'd like the Commission to look at? Alder Person, Kubasak.
Thank you. Just for clarification, with anybody that has existing signs, it would be non-conforming status, correct? For everybody grandfathering in, and that was one of the concerns that Mr. Kellogg had brought up. Obviously, conditional use permits would be authorized. But anybody else without a conditional use permit, this would just be non-conforming status. And then if the signs changed in the future, then now they would have to comply with the current code.
Correct. Yeah, and that's listed in definition, non-conforming sign on page four. To that effect. Other requests to speak? Any other areas again, particular areas that commissioners, I guess, or council members that you want the Commission to look at? If you do, Alder Person, Raum?
The only thing I'll say is that, Scott, you read it closer than I did. Is that there are, I think, issues in there, I think, to be resolved before we pass that because I read it over, but you came up with ones that I even missed. So it's, I think we go back, go back to the committee to clarify some of this stuff.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, the motions to refer this item back, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 13 is consider a special ordinance annexing territory to the city of Wisconsin Rapids. The petitioner is Alexander Field, Southwood County Airport Commission, Attachment Number 6. And I've got a note here that this item would require two-thirds majority for a positive passage. Alder Person, what are your wishes regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Koth. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg? Are there any requests to speak? Stacking up. Alder Person, Blazer, you're first.
Just a question. So who's going to own this hangar?
The commission hangar will be owned by the commission.
Okay, okay. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Alder Person, Koth, you're next.
I just wanted to stop and take a moment and see if there's anyone in the audience that was here to speak on this issue this evening.
I see the airport manager's in the audience. Jeremy, did you want to speak?
I was here to answer questions if anybody had any. Otherwise, I think my letters included in the packet states, from my perspective, the term is...
And I don't see any other commissioners at the moment here. Any questions, I guess, for Jeremy, the airport manager? Maybe you've all reached out to him. Alder Person, Raum, you're next.
Thank you, Honored. I do have a, not a question, but that we, after all these years, have to go through this process to, I guess, build something new. Obviously, I think the answer is going to be is that to provide services, sewer, water, fire protection, and that type of stuff. That can, that can be done because we've done it with the terminal. And I don't believe that that is in the city now. Somewhere way back, somewhere way back, before my time even, not even just here, before my time, that somehow the city provided, agreed to provide services to the airport. And I don't think we have to annex that into the community. I think we can, that we can, and also I don't think it became part of. That, to me, it should go through a committee of the city that you're going to provide, that we want to provide the services even. To me, it shouldn't be up to the commission. The commission, I guess, can ask for services. But the committee, which is Public Works, should be involved in that they would, that they then agree to or not to provide the services. I think we were totally missing the bolt on because there's $1.8 million that was granted to build a hangar. And I think what we're also missing the bolt on is that how we're subsidizing a golf course, which nobody wants to say. And we're getting no return on it. And the golf course happens to be out of the city. And I think everybody knows what I'm talking about, the town of Rome, who will not give us, other than a $10,000 donation, to the commission. Which then the commission patted themselves on the back is that we got $10,000. But Rome is getting everything in return. It's kind of what is happening in Ukraine and Washington with others. Quit pro quo. There's a time that we stand up and we do what is right. And as far as I'm concerned, this thing should go back and actually where it should have been to start with. When it came up for, I don't have a problem that the commission asked for. I don't have a problem with that. But this should have been to the Public Works Committee for them to make a decision, is the city going to provide the service? The commission can do whatever. They can drill a well. They can do wherever. It should have came to the Public Works Committee because that's how we operate, through a committee system. And that's where this should have been, the decision then should have been. Are you going to? But also what's not been, to my knowledge, again, what is the commission going to pay the city for services? That costs money. You and me get a monthly bill on our sewer and water. What's the commission going to pay back to the city? Obviously, a quarter of that or better, the city's going to pay ourselves back if that's how it'd be worked out. What is Nekusa? Port Edwards? Town of Grand Rapids, what are they going to pay? Because they haven't been paying, I don't think they have been, anyway, to my knowledge, for services. This is, this is a, this is a commission, a group of different communities, and all should have to pay an equal share. And also, I think, what's missed is make sure that we, those that are really getting advantage of the expansion of the airport. Maybe we have to have a toll booth so people who want to drive up from the south can come into the town. Because it's ridiculous of what, what we have done. And I, I don't think we, I don't think we can do this. I don't, I shouldn't say we can't do it. We can do whatever we want. I'm against the annexation. A boundary agreement, there are things that can be done that we talk amongst the communities, and that has not been done. Not at all. Because the annexation is what people want. And that's what, I don't know if any of you guys got calls today or yesterday, but I did. And from different communities. But I don't think they realize that they've been actually somewhat getting a free ride. And so I think even, and now we, the hangar, the amazing thing to me, you know, the most amazing. And Bud, you've been, you know a lot more about the airport than I do. I'll tell you that. The amazing thing is $1.8 million, and now we're talking about the annex in. Isn't this a little after, whatever you want to call after? Should this not have been resolved before? But there was $1.8 million that people look at. Bud, you're more, you were years ago, more of a tax hawk than I was, but free money. And that, I think, your old man, your relation, I think, would somewhat coincide. Free money is not free money. Somebody's paying. Taxes are taxes, and we all pay. And I think we're going to have a couple of other issues as we go on down here about tax money. But, so anyway, I'll cut that off. I oppose the annexation. I think we're way, way doing things in a different, going in a different way than we should be. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll address a couple of points that I don't know if Jeremy wants to address. Some of them, the question was raised about who's going to pay for the utilities. And I would, I think it's an operating piece maybe, and then it's also who's going to pay to run the extension of the utilities to the new hangar. So the commission already pays a monthly water bill. The utility discovered that it was not being billed for wastewater services, and that issue, I believe, is being rectified. As far as the extension of services, the sewer extension, water extension would be paid for by the commission and the project, of which the city would pay. It's a portion of that. But in this case, because it's being funded entirely by the state grant, it's part of the project cost. I can't comment exactly on the annexation process, but I just know that this is the same annexation process that we followed for other annexation of parcels in which an applicant requests to the city to annex a portion of its property within the, to the city's boundary or within the city's boundaries. On the point on revenues, I think, or at least, I won't comment necessarily on the subsidy and the who benefits and that, that's not something I want to, reason to wade into as far as the annexation question goes. But I will answer the point about revenues. And the commission consciously has said that they want to attract as much revenue as possible to benefit, you know, serving the airport, but also benefiting the taxpayers. Ultimately, the taxpayers subsidize about $140,000 of the airport's annual operating expenses. And it's been a goal of the commissions to back off that subsidy to be fully funded and self-sustaining like airports in Eagle River and others. And that's why the model was really changed to not privatize some of the FBO activities, but for the commission to manage them and to own them. And then ultimately, the taxpayers would have less to subsidize. So one, it's a budgetary impact, positive budgetary impact to the city. And in the hopes that, you know, in the last year, I think we flowed 100,000 gallons of fuel. And that's on a rough ballpark, about $100,000 in new revenue that the commission took in. And then with the hangar, there's an opportunity to attract revenues through transient aircraft, the aircraft that come to our community that might be here for an overnight and want to hangar their aircraft here. Currently, the airport is at capacity when it comes to hangar space. And so this is an opportunity to capture more revenue, ultimately, in the commission's view, to back off what the subsidy of the taxpayers would be. And the last point around economic development, that any business that uses that airport as a mode of transportation, whether it's for tourism purposes, I mean, it really has to be indiscriminate, right? In that it's a public infrastructure asset that's available to all that choose to use it. And from an economic development perspective, it really plays a strong role in our ability to grow and diversify the local economy. So I would just answer those questions and offer that last point on the economic development portion. Jeremy, did you have any, anything else, that, questions that were raised that you needed to answer or felt that you need to answer?
This is, it sounds like it's on. I just wanted to, one point that I don't think was made was that annexation was presented as most likely the most economic option for the commission for provision of services. The, Alder Person, Raum, did bring up that, yes, a well and septic system for that building is an option. We didn't pursue that option because early on in the planning process, it was advised that we went through... that we went through the annexation. So this, where we're at now, is the most economic option for the commission to proceed with, with the, with the building of the, of the hangars. So certainly, construction of a self-sustaining water and sewer utility out there would be, would set the project back substantially and certainly cost the commission a lot more money.
Other questions for Jeremy while he's at the podium, at the moment? Okay. Alderperson, Virginkey, you're next.
How many communities now... How many communities now support the airport? I know Beeren used to, Grand Rapids, Nacousses, Port Edwards, and Wisconsin Rapids.
Beeren, at some point in history, Beeren withdrew their support. So it's just the four owner municipalities.
Has there been an effort to contact other communities in our area to help support the airport? There's some benefit to them.
Definitely, yeah. And that was, that's been our outreach to the Village of Beeren. They've decided not to participate. The town of Rome, as Alderperson Rayom mentioned, did offer a nominal contribution to the airport. It wasn't what we asked for. We asked for more, based upon the equalized value formula, so it's, it's equitable and fair for all the municipalities. But Beeren has been out there, and, and that's, and Wood County also supports the airport with a contribution through their economic development efforts. They support the rapids and the Marshfield airports.
Well, I know what the budget used to be for the airport and what it is today. The taxpayers of Wisconsin Rapids are picking up a good portion of the budget. And there are other communities, like I say, that are, are benefiting from it. It's just like the airport up at Wausau, you know, Stevens Point is a long ways away, but they contribute to the regional airport up there. I think that's what we have to look at, is to get these other communities around here involved in it, whether it's in a small amount or large amount, as, as they grow and they get more revenue from hotel motel tax and other, revenue from other sources, they should be contributing. It shouldn't just be the taxpayers of Wisconsin Rapids.
That's right. And I think that's where the commission will ultimately get, in fact, we've proposed in this year's budget to, again, for the second year in a row, not raise the additional ask to the owner municipalities, but to keep that request flat. And I believe as we build up reserves, our plan is to actually request less from the owner municipalities because of these revenues that are now coming to the commission. Bring up hotel motel tax, right, and that the whole point there is, we'd rather have them fly into our airport, because when they fly into our airport, they stay in our hotels. They don't stay in the other hotels in the other communities. So I think that, you know, there's a direct correlation, and I don't need to go into it, but I think that, you know, it's an important point that you raised too, about the hotel motel tax. And ultimately, I think, I use Eagle River, they're a great model, a great example, they are fully subsidized by their own operations. They don't ask the taxpayers for any support. And I believe our airport can get there, they can get there today, it's just it eliminates any reserves for maintenance opportunities and, and needs out there. Alderperson, Rayom, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, again. The problem I have is with the annexation. I think through a boundary agreement, if we work with, actually in this case, it's just Grand Rapids, but it'd be with the commission, that we can, cannot we work with our neighbors to provide services without annexation? In my mind, that's the, can we do that? Or, we can do that, but is that the route we should go versus a direct annexation? Because that's what it is. And we, our, our boundaries, if anybody looks on a map, is, and how it all goes. We're not in a square, we're not whatever, surrounded by the different communities. Is, is that, is that more of a fair and reasonable approach versus the city annexing that in? And that's... So I, I oppose the annexation.
Thank you, Alderperson. Kubasek, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. The one thing that I'll talk about, or briefly talk about, is a point that Mr. Rayom brought up about the cart in front of the horse, and it seems like we've been doing that, how many times? Every time. And Mr. Sickler mentioned, and this isn't a question for Mr. Sickler, but he mentioned that early on in the process, that's what annexation was talked about, how long, how early in the process was this? Because this seems like it's now in the process, and it's late in the process, or it's almost like, if you guys don't pass this naughty naughty, this isn't going to happen, and we're going to turn down money, and I hate that. And I'm getting sick and tired of this, what's going on. We need to be involved as a council, it needs to go to committee, even if it's a recommendation from the Airport Commission. They're a referral body, and it comes to us, and we're the ones making the decision. Otherwise, then we look bad on a radio show the next morning if we don't approve it, and that's wrong. We need to be involved early in the process, and then we can decide moving forward. Thank you.
Are there any further requests to speak? I guess I would just, my only comment would be, we just dealt with an annexation two months ago, and none of this was raised. And so if it was a concern then, I would expect it, if it's a concern now, I certainly would have expected it to have been a concern then, or the last annexation before that, or the annexations before that, so.
Point of order. You were not recognized, Mr. Mayor.
I'm the chair.
You need, it doesn't matter if you're the chair. You can ask to be recognized, you put down your gavel, and you can go over by the podium.
Are there further requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve the annexation request by the Airport Commission. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five ayes, three nays.
Actually, it's, it has to be two thirds. Right, so motion fails.
You're right. Motion failed, five ayes, three nays.
Thank you. Move on to item 14, review and consider approval of the preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments to pave an asphalt surface on the alley immediately west of Second Avenue South between Park Avenue and Lyons Street. Joe, did you want to speak to that?
Sure, I can provide a brief background for this item. Over the past few weeks, the Public Works Department has been preparing to pave alleys in the city, in particular, an alley over by Chestnut Street, as well as the alley adjacent to Second Avenue. I should mention, there is a map in the package, just for reference on the alley that we're talking about. It became apparent quite recently that we did not have a preliminary resolution to, to do the paving work. This alley has been an on and off discussion item for several years due to the DOT project that was just recently completed on Second Avenue, where the city had purchased access rights from the property owners, which these property owners now use the alley exclusively. There have also been discussions with property owners about having this gravel alley plowed and maintained to a higher standard now that it is their primary access. From a Public Works Department perspective, paving the alley allows for easier maintenance and snow plowing, consistent with how we manage all of our local streets. With the passage of a resolution, the Public Works Department could potentially proceed with paving yet this year, and if the cost for the paving is estimated to be about $10,000, and has a scope primarily limited to providing just a hard surface to the gravel alley. Property owners would be assessed consistent with the assessment policy, and staff would recommend approving the preliminary resolution.
Alderperson Zerfli, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Joe. I'm just looking at the letter that was sent out on the ninth. I haven't, this has not gone to committee, Public Works, that I can see, I would, I think it should, I appreciate the fact that you want to get going before winter, but, I mean, we just talked about this, so I would like to make a motion to send it to the Public Works Committee.
We motion to refer this item to the Public Works Committee by Zerfli, and a second by Kubasek. I see requests to speak. Is there any opposition to moving into a vote? No, seeing no opposition, the motion is to refer, please cast your ballots.
Katnall, I'll see, I confirm here.
Here we go. Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 15 is consider for adoption the actions of the Planning Commission at its meeting on October 7, 2019. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on October 7 in the first floor conference room here at City Hall. Members present, including those in attendance in the audience, are in file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 4:28 PM. Item 1 is approval of the report from the August 5, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion and a second to approve the report, and that motion carried unanimously. Item 2, Plan 190938, Community Development. The applicant is requesting adoption of a new sign ordinance, Chapter 46 of the municipal code to replace the current version. There was a motion and a second to approve the planned community development department to adopt a new sign ordinance to replace the current version, including a provision to allow non-commercial murals as a special exemption, exception, with the same limitations as a wall sign and supplemental signage under 46.23, as long, continues as long as the property owner continues to own the property, or the property use is consistent, motion carried unanimously. Item 3 is adjournment, there was a motion, second to adjourn, and the meeting, motion carried unanimously, with the meeting adjourning at 4:50 PM. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll move to approve the minutes, understanding that the ordinance will go back to Planning Commission.
Correct. We get a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Coth. Any requests to speak?
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 16 is consideration for adoption the actions of the Standing Committees of the Common Council as follows. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting on October 1, and B, Finance and Property Committee meeting on October 15. Alderperson Coth, floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Property and Finance Committee meeting met at 4:45 PM on October 1. Two members were present, Alderperson Katnall was excused, a list of others attending is on file with the clerk's office. Item number two was consider a referral to partner with the town of Grand Rapids to apply for a DOT multimodal local supplement grant to upgrade Washi- upgrade Washington Street from 48th Street to 80th Street to accommodate truck traffic. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to approve the request to partner with the town of Grand Rapids to apply for the DOT multimodal local supplement grant to upgrade Washington Street from 48th Street to 80th Street. Motion carried. Item number three was to review and consider for approval an agreement between the city of Wisconsin Rapids and CAP Services Incorporated for the administration of the city's Community Development Block Program, CDBG Revolving Loan Fund. Was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to approve the agreement between the city of Wisconsin Rapids and CAP Services Incorporated for administration of the city's Community Development Block Grant, CB, CDBG Revolving Loan Fund. See attachment number FP1. Motion carried. Item number four was review and consider for approval a contract with Quest Engineering for wetland delineation at 4401 Commerce Drive. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to approve the contract with Quest Engineering for a wetland delineation at 4401 Commerce Drive for a cost not to exceed $4,593.42. The motion carried. Item number five was the 2020 budget update. Mayor Vruwink gave the committee an update on the status of the 2020 budget, no action was taken. Item number six, consider an ordinance to amend Section 22.09 Para 2 Para B of the municipal code to increase the quota or eliminate the quota for Class A retail beer licenses. The current quota is 25 licenses. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to eliminate the quota for Class A retail beer licenses. Motion carried. Item number seven, consider an ordinance to amend Section 23.08 Para 1 of the municipal code to increase the quota or eliminate the quota for Class A retail liquor licenses. The current quota is 20 licenses. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to eliminate the quota for Class A retail liquor licenses. Motion carried. Item number eight was consider a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine license for the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center located at 320 West Grand Avenue, Suite 104, for an art-on-tap fundraiser to be held October 19 from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to approve a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine license for the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center Incorporated, located at 320 West Grand Avenue, Suite 104, for an art-on-tap fundraiser to be held October 19 from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Item number nine was consider a request from Justin Tritt's agent on behalf of the Beast Cage LLC, doing business as Beast Cage, located at 3039 State Highway 73, for a Class B beer license. This item was tabled. Item number 10 was consider a request from Nicole Griffin-Hoggin, agent, on behalf of Diogen Group LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store, number 21068, located at 820 Eighth Street South, for a Class A beer license. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth, to approve a Class A beer license for the Dollar General Group LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store, number 21068, Agent Nicole Griffin-Hoggin, for the store located at 820 Eighth Street South. Motion carried. Item number 11 was audit of the bills, motion by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to approve, check number 60021026. Motion carried. Beverage operator licenses, it was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to approve the beverage operator licenses. Motion carried. Item number 13 was to set the next meeting date. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held November 5 at 4:45 PM. Item 14 was adjournment, it was motion by Blazer, seconded by Coth to adjourn, motion carried, be adjourned at 5:44 PM. With that, I move for adoption of the minutes for Property and Finance.
Motion to approve by Coth, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any requests, few requests to speak? Alderpersons, Zerfli, you're first.
Sorry, Shane, I tried to wait. Just speaking to item number two, we all must have got an email from Arnie Neistrom. There was, I guess, an error made in the motion by Grand Rapids, so I don't know if that affects action we need to take or not.
Well, somebody had reached out, I don't remember which member of the council, asked me, and I think the board, as I understand, is going to be taking this item up tomorrow, and so if there's a reconciliation that needs to happen, it sounds like they're going to correct that action, or at least seek a correction to their action, which would bring it in alignment with what the city's understanding was and what was presented to the committee. So after that, if it's not rectified, then I don't think we participate. I think it's a matter of, that's what the council or the committee recommended, and whatever the council decides to, to agree to here, but basically, if there's a reconciliation, it'd come back through the process.
So from a technical, from a technical standpoint, we wouldn't have to worry about changing anything?
No, because as I, you know, we're participating under those, that understanding, and if it's different, then I don't think we participate.
Okay, thank you.
I wouldn't have the authority, or staff wouldn't have the authority, to enter in any amended version of that, I guess, would be another way of saying it.
Alderperson Blazer, we're good? Alderperson Virgin, Rayom, you're next.
Yeah, I, I, same thing, well, actually, there's a couple others that we already approved from this report, so just that, how I voted originally stands on that. I approve what, the minutes, what the committee says, but I do obviously oppose a couple of those items that were on there. But along with item number two. That is quite a, can be quite an ordeal. You know, I think there's more to look at than who can say yes and who can say no without saying, or without knowing what we want. I think most of us have at some point in time driven that stretch of Washington Street. And there are deep ditches on both sides. It's a twenty, if my, if what was said at the meeting, because I was there, twenty-two feet wide is the street. They want to go to twenty-six or whatever. To me, a lot more planning has to be put into, and then bring it back to this body. And again, it's also one that I think should fall upon Public Works, the committee, or committee process. And that should be, not just somebody brings a dream out of the sky, or whatever it is. I think that should go to Public Works. Is that feasible, or something that this community want, that we want to undertake? So I would like to see what, actually, because some, then, it was mentioned at that meeting, actually, on the side of that, we could have a bike lane. I don't know. And it's not just because I'm approaching seventy, but I'm not there yet, but if I was twenty-five and still riding a bicycle, I'd like to see what that sure looks like before I'd ride a bicycle out there when I was twenty-five, fifty years ago, forty-five years ago. Somebody's dreaming. And again, it's where I would like to see all the facts put on the table, then we make a decision. Should it not be done? I'm not saying it shouldn't be. But instead of maybe whatever, the twenty-six foot should be a thirty-six foot wide dri, highway, to take the truck traffic out to Eightieth Street, because I don't think anybody's realizing, even thinking about, nobody in this community is what it is. And then how to get onto Eightieth Street. But also, if they're going to go to the north, if that isn't one conglomeration that the state dreamt up, that intersection there, which took X number of years till we had enough people killed, and that's the only reason that it took place finally. To put those, that truck traffic, added truck traffic, onto at Eightieth Street, and how to me, you got to do something with that intersection. This is, this is another one of these dreams. And then we correct a problem that occurs later. That people can't think. And I think Joe knows. You guys in law enforcement, I think, realize what happens at these intersections. Chief Levins. I think a total rethinking of what they all want to do. It sounds good. Sounds good. Mariana wants the added truck tra, great, great for the community, great for the area. But I don't think, then again, we think about what that all brings about until later on. So it's just something that I, I think we should, this is one to revisit, and not just leave it upon, I don't think the other community that then will say that they can agree to, or whatever, and that will go along with. I think we all have, I think we have to be involved in that process too, with that, with the other community. Thank you.
I guess there was a question raised about process, and I was, I came to the meeting after this item was discussed. If I'm not mistaken, this was the request from the town of Grand Rapids, because we only have a small portion of that Washington Street in our jurisdiction. Maybe talk about the process going forward, Joe?
That is my understanding as well. The city would essentially just be partnering with that, with the town of Grand Rapids application. The only portion that is in the city limits along that corridor is at the Mariani property, and it's just on one, one half of the road. It's about thirteen hundred feet on a, over a mile-long stretch of roadway.
In terms of design, almost that entire area is in the town of Grand Rapids, so in terms of our ability, I mean, it's a DOT grant, so I'm guessing it's the DOT that's deciding the design elements. If it's using federal money, it has to have additional accommodations for, in this case, bicycles. Is that what I understand to be the case?
The bicycles, I, I think that would be a town of Grand Rapids decision. I don't, I don't believe the state has those provisions included in their requirements anymore. But yes, it is, by and large, the design elements are determined by the facilities development manual through the state.
Okay, I think that takes care of the questions that I had heard raised. Next in our speaking order, Alderperson Virginsky. Can make sure his microphone, correct. So it's the, the question is about the wetland delineation on Commerce Drive, it'd be the property to the west of Forty-Eighth Street. The DNR has designated it as almost entirely wetland.
I've walked every foot of that Commerce Center out there. Unless somebody went out there and dug a pit in the last eighteen years, I can tell you, there's no wetlands out there.
We hope so, too.
The vegetation will tell you there's no wetlands out there.
Right.
Now, forty-five hundred dollars isn't much money, but it's just the idea that it, it doesn't have to be.
Sure. Well, and if we had the control over, the power over the DNR, we could just tell them that, unfortunately, they, they've said it's been designated as possible wetlands, and here we are. Alderperson Coth.
Do we have to do that survey now?
If, if we want to pursue it for development, yes, somebody's going to have to do it. So it's in.
Is it the DNR that's requiring it, or?
If we want to have it developed, we have to have the wetlands delineated, or we can't market it as a developable parcel.
Well, it's an easy forty-five hundred dollars, I'll say that.
Yeah. Won't disagree. Alderperson Coth?
Yeah, I just, because there's some concern with, item number two, I'd be willing to amend my motion to hold out two, and then just so, from the previous reading, if people wanted to vote their conscience on items six and seven, I would hold those out for separate votes. So if, I can amend my motion if Alderperson Kellogg would be willing to uphold that second, just so those items can be voted on separately, and then just vote, vote on the balance of the report.
I'd call for unanimous consent. Is there any objection to withholding, withholding items two, six, and seven? No objection? Okay, great. So that leaves the balance of the report. Any other requests to speak? Alderperson Kubasak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Never thought about it until when Mr. Virginsky brought up a wetland delineation. The question is, should we be doing it? And the answer is, if we want to change what the wetland maps are now, and there actually is in fact a number of wetland there, by asking for a wetland delineation, we kind of roll the dice and see if we can get less wetlands on there after a five-year period, or however long of the DNR did it. My only concern right now is that we've had a tremendous amount of rainfall, and being someone who has been and currently working out at that Metal, Metalco project, groundwater is a major issue. I don't have a problem approving this, because it, I believe that we need to do a wetland delineation to, to hopefully roll the dice and get better, better mapping on that. But as far as, and I don't, the, our, we don't have a economic development person anymore, but I think that this is also something that we could roll into TIF expenditures, as far as a project plan for that TIF that was created for this project. But it's one of those where if we did a wetland delineation tomorrow, it would come back all green on the whole site. So a, again, it's a case where we, we, I think that it's necessary, but maybe we might want to wait till next season to do it, even if we approve it tonight, because we're going to get worse results because of the amount of rainfall and water and, and groundwater that's out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, motions to approve with the except, exception of items two, six, and seven. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Move into item number two, I guess in that particular order. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding item two?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Coth to approve. Second by Kellogg. Any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five ayes, three nays.
Move into item number six, consider an ordinance to amend Section two-two point oh nine, Para two, Para B of the municipal code to increase the quota or eliminate the quota for Class A retail beer licenses. The current quota is twenty-five licenses.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Urflu. Alderperson Rayo, you're first.
Your Honor, is this, some, let's see. Get the right number here. This was not, this was taken up earlier, correct?
Right.
Just to make sure, not, it's a procedural issue that I have, because I, to me, personally, I think it should fall under, just, we shouldn't have it earlier in the agenda. It falls under the committee report, and if somebody wants to hold it out and then to debate it and whatever that they can, but I, I, I don't, because, I guess unless I could have stepped on enough people's toes to get them to change their mind, we could change it yet this evening, maybe. I don't know if you can. But it was passed. And so I, I approve of what the minutes were, I approve of, even though I disagreed with the action. But I don't think that, I don't think this is how things should be. We shouldn't be, I guess if you want to read it over, we can read it over. Well, unless you want to try to undo what you did a half hour ago, or an hour ago. Other than, I can make the comment is that just that I disagreed with, but I think that's why it should fall, these things should fall within the committee report. And that's where we should act upon it. And if I, if I want to hold out what finance does, or if I want to hold out Public Works that I'm on, that if I want to hold out to talk about something, I can, under that, I do that. I don't have to, to me, it is. That's, to me, that's where it should fall. And so with that, I I voted against, but I support what the minutes say, because I don't have quarrel with that, so.
And certainly could have made a motion to suspend the rules when the floor was open to reorder, if you wanted to do that at that time. Alderpersons, Urflu?
Well, just because procedure was brought up, I think it went to committee, if the committee wouldn't have passed it, would it have appeared separately?
Well, the, the issue is that the ord, the majority of these, the ordinances, were not presented to the committees. The committees maybe gave direction on to prepare an ordinance, and because, because we have first readings and second readings, and also because sometimes there's an ordinance tucked away in Public Works, that doesn't then, I mean, I guess, I think the clerk, and with input from me, and I know we've done this in the past, to bring all the resolutions, or at least the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the ordinances, that were not actually presented to the committee, they were, they were compiled after, we didn't think it was appropriate to append those minutes to the, to the standing committees, because they were specifically done after the fact, and the committee did not even have the writing in front of them in terms of the ordinance. So, and I think it was, again, more to, to not lose track of all of the ordinances, and to pull out the ones, and put them at the beginning. And if that is not the way you want to do it, then some direction on that probably is appropriate. A lot of times when they come back for second readings, they're going to be on, on the top there again. If there's an action item from Wastewater Treatment Commission, that goes on the top, so I guess the, the decision was made to, to pull out the ordinances that, that weren't in ordinance form at the time of the committee, and, and hold them out, and, and be more transparent about, you know, that these ordinances are being considered at the meeting. But if the council wants to do it a different way, that's, that's fine, but I don't know if the clerk has any comments on that.
Well, I guess just with, since the committee passed these, I don't, I guess I don't have a problem with the way it was. That might be different if the committee, you know, if the motion failed, then I guess I could see an issue with it.
Procedurally, they wouldn't, and that ordinance wouldn't be drafted, though, and placed on the agenda if there was a negative recommendation, I believe?
That was basically my, my question. I'm sorry if that, that was misunderstood. I, I do believe in the committee process. The committee approved these, so I guess as it stands, I don't have a problem with it. But if the committee would not have, and it somehow would have approved, then it's not what happened, so.
Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
And we get to discuss this again next month for a second reading, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it did, the ordinance, the motion carried, but the ordinance did not pass, and the ordinance, again, did not exist at the Finance and Property Committee meeting, because what the, what the committee did was, they approved drafting an ordinance to be taken up at council, so if you would like this done a different way, I'm happy to do it.
Anything further? Okay. Alderperson Rayo, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. And the, from my point of, the, the committee, a committee takes action to do what they want to do, but then again, I think the committee should look at what the wording is, because I think even Scott, when you related to the sign ordinance, is that then again, the committee to have another shot at of what it actually says, not just to say, this is what I want, and this is then what comes to be, is that really the intent of what the, those on the committee wanted. So I think that, to me, they should, the committee should have another look at, at what the ordinance is, and then it comes, then it comes to the council. what the ordinance is, and then it comes, then it comes to the council. And then we can debate what it is, but I think instead of just having the wording here at the council, it's kind of, again, to me, anyway, after the fact, when we could debate, we could debate some of this at a committee meeting, and answers be answered, and not here this evening. Thank you.
Alder Person Coth, you're next.
Thank you, your honor. I just want to explain to the fellow members of council, the reason why I amended the motion to pull out six and seven separately. Alder Person Rayom did vote no earlier, when this was read under the beginning of our meeting, and as, I wanted to give him the opportunity to vote no on these parts of the Property and Finance Committee meeting minutes, if he didn't agree with it, so it doesn't look like he voted no previously, and then he reversed his decision down here. So I felt that that was appropriate to extend that courtesy to him, so he would have the opportunity to exercise his vote and his voice on that. But otherwise, I know we discussed this at the committee, for both of these, to eliminate the quotas on the beer licenses and the liquor licenses, again, to reiterate, this is for off-premise consumption of these beverages, and basically what this does is it gives other retailers a chance to stock the product and be more competitive. And I do remember that committee meeting, Alder Person Rayom was there and did explain that a while ago, you used to get your beer and liquor at the liquor store, and that's the way it was, and that was, if I'm correct, Tom, if that's the way you remember it, but that's not the way it is this day and age, because now you can do everything in one stop, which I look at, it has a convenience for the consumers that, and it makes it more, it makes it easier for other stores to compete when they can stock similar products as their competitors without forcing consumers to go to separate stops.
Are there any further requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Item six, the recommendation by the committee.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Leaves us item number seven, the consideration of an ordinance to amend section 23.08, parent one of the municipal code to increase the quota, or eliminate the quota for Class A retail liquor licenses, the current quota is 20 licenses. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding the committee action on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Go ahead. A motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Katna. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
Item B is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on October 15, 2019.
I'd like to suspend the rules and send this all the way to the end of the agenda.
Is there any opposition to doing so? Call unanimous consent, to refer this item to the end of the meeting, to pass over this particular item at the moment, item B, to close the, close session. Item C, Public Works Committee meeting held on October 1, 2019. Alder Person Kubashak, the floor is yours.
Public Works Committee, Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 1, 2019, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Thaddeus Kubashak, Tom Rayom, and Vernon Virjinsky were present, others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item one, call to order, the meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. Item two, review and consider approving a surveillance camera for Wisconsin Rapids Skate Park. Motion by Kubashak, second by Rayom, was to refer this item to the Park and Rec Commission. Motion carried, three to zero. Item three, review and consider approving storm sewer options for 21st Place. Motion by Virjinsky, second by Kubashak, was to postpone this item until the next regularly scheduled Public Works Committee meeting. Motion carried, three to zero. Item number four, review and consider approving changes to the lawn mowing practices and procedure on the city-owned boulevard at the south side of the expressway between Lincoln Street and First Street South. Motion by Virjinsky, second by Kubashak, was made to request Mayor Bruin to see if the airport commission mower can be safely used to mow the expressway hill. Motion carried, three to zero. Item number five, review and update the creation of an ad hoc committee to oversee a citizen-sponsored tree replacement initiative for Robinson Park and other areas in the city from the aftermath of the catastrophic storm that occurred in July. Motion by Kubashak, second by Virjinsky, was to postpone this item until the next regularly scheduled Public Works Committee meeting. Motion carried, three to zero. Review and consider approving a program to pick up large garbage items that do not fit within the garbage totes. This item will be added to the referral list. Item seven, review and consider approving a change to the sidewalk assessment levied against property owners. This item will be added to the referral list. Review and consider a change order request to install pour-in-place fall protection for the swing set area at the aquatic park and playground. Motion by Rayom, second by Virjinsky, was to approve a change order request to install pour-in-place fall protection for the swing set area at the aquatic park and playground for a total amount of $26,110.23. Motion carried, two to one, with Kubashak voting in the negative. Item number nine, review and consider the sidewalk improvements for the Chase Street project. Motion by Virjinsky, second by Kubashak, was to create a moratorium on new sidewalk installation throughout the city, excluding hazard and storm replacement. Motion carried, two to one, with Rayom voting in the negative. Item 10 was Director of Public Works report, the DPW report was reviewed. Item number 11, review referral list, the referral list was reviewed. Item 12, adjournment, motion by Rayom, second by Virjinsky, to adjourn meeting, motion carried, three to zero, meeting adjourned at 8:14 PM. And with that, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Kubashak, and a second by Zurflu. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Rayom, you're first.
Thank you, your honor. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to hold out item nine, your honor.
Item number nine. Got a, any call for unanimous, or call unanimous consent, is there any objection to holding on item nine? Okay. That leaves the balance of the report. Any other requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, motions to approve, with the exception of item nine, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
All right, that leaves item number nine, which is review and consider the sidewalk improvements for the Chase Street project. Make sure your microphone's on, please. Thank you.
There we go, back on. Thank you, your honor. This is a project that has been in the works for a few years, anyway. It's finally come to fruition, in that 2019 is when it's taking place. It's, there were probably discussions that took place, maybe, not maybe, discussions that took place over that period of time, but it, by what our ordinance is and says we should do, is that sidewalks would be put in, are to be put in. And that, that was the, the committee went through and did that, and that was the direction that was to take place. Now, after, after the fact, and that we're at the point of doing a project, there is a, an attempt to not do what the project was to be scheduled for. And I, along with, I did, I voted against, obviously, and I support the sidewalk going in, but I, and lost on that motion, but the motion has to do with, is to create a moratorium, a new sidewalk installation throughout the city, but then it says excluding hazard and storm replacement. Well, you know, if you want to exclude, you exclude. Don't put in because of. But it, the committee took upon, the committee did, whatever year that it was, the recommendation was, and it passed its council, to do the street improvements, curb and gutter, and sidewalks to go in. But also, I would say, is that those, is that I think we have to keep in mind, is that where the location is, also. And it would, and some will say, well, there's not the kids there now. But I also, when I was at our committee meeting, is that there were kids there. Just so everybody knows, in this case, it has to do with Chase Street and 17th Street, which surrounds, not surrounds, but is in the Meade School area. And to provide access for people and kids to walk, I think is of utmost importance for us in this community. We can say things all we want, but if we don't have our kids and children in that in mind, then mine have all left home. I know what it is, and I also know what we did, this community did, a few years ago. And one that I'll just mention now is actually, and people didn't like it, that lived along there, but I haven't had a complaint since. Had to do with our Safe Routes to School program, and that had to do along with Washington Street, 28th Street that went to Washington School, that it's a great addition. I think it makes, personally, I think it makes the street look better. Sidewalks are, to me, a needed thing, that I think we as a community, for a number of years, went by the wayside and said that that wasn't to be. I'm guilty of that myself, because I've been around that long. But there are places for sure that sidewalks should be put in. And that is, and so I, I hold this out, your honor. I know it's one of those things probably where, I'm not sure quite how a motion would be made to satisfy, so which way to make the motion, because to have a positive motion. But I guess my, my motion would be is that the moratorium on sidewalk installation and that, whatever this all says here, is that that be stricken from the wayside, and that sidewalks installation would take place, and in this case, would take place on the project on Chase Street there, so. So however, to exactly get that worded, hopefully I think you know what I mean on that, so.
Attorney Schill, do you want to speak too? I'm just looking at the agenda item and what would be considered customary from an open meetings law perspective.
Well, right, I provided some comments on the breadth of the motion that was made, so Alder Person Rayom, if, I would advise that your motion would be to, to continue with sidewalk installation as, you know, as normal, and specifically the Chase Street project.
Yep, fine with me. And, and just so that there's not a moratorium on anywhere else that we proceed with.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Alder Person Rayom, and it looks like we've got a second already by Zurflu. We'll continue through the speaking order, since there were some folks on deck there. Alder Person Blazer?
I guess not to rehash what Alder Person Rayom had said, but I think as a city, there is a certain amount of responsibility, that arterial streets should have sidewalks for the safety and protection of the children. Obviously, some of the side streets don't, and I don't believe that they need to, but I think they need to feed into arterial street with sidewalks, but, and that's all I'm going to have to say, but I see some residents from Chase and the school superintendent here, and I just wanted to yield any time to them to speak, should they want to speak.
Anyone wishing to address the body? Craig? Craig, if you could come to the podium, please.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. Craig Bruin, Superintendent, Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. I'm not going to stand up here and pretend to know what the decision-making process was with regard to sidewalks, nor the city budget, or any of those other aspects, but what I would ask you to consider is what's already been laid out by some of your council members, which would be, please be cognizant in making decisions, these decisions with reference to proximity to our school buildings, because although they are not used perhaps to the degree that they might have been, you know, several years ago, or decades ago, they are used with consistent frequency for our kids and families, and having sidewalks and accessible, you know, methods to get to school, particularly within that two-mile radius to our elementary schools, is much needed and is appreciated by our families. Thank you.
Alder Person Blazer, well, I guess we'll just go down the speaking order. Alder Person Coth, you're next.
Just was willing to yield time if anyone else wanted to speak on this issue.
Anyone else wishing to address the body? Either come, approach the podium, or raise a hand? Yes, sir, please come to the podium, just introduce yourself and your address for the record. Thank you.
You're talking about the sidewalks on Chase Street, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I got hearing problems, and so I, I wanted to make sure before I voiced my opinion. I feel we got ramrodded into this whole situation by you, Mr. Mayor, because you let us down the first of the year, or right around the first of the year, when we were supposed to have a meeting with you to talk this over, but no, no, all spring, no. We met on the corner of 17th Avenue in Chase Street with two engineers. We didn't even have an alter person, because he moved to Rudolph. So, that's why there's a big stink. You're forcing this on us. The majority of the people that live on Chase Street between those four blocks are retired The extra cost is going to be really bad. Sure, you could put it on taxes for eight years. My assessment's $8,000, and it might be more, because they're digging, they haul dirt out and haul it back in the same day. It's, it's a continuous whatever. So, I don't think I'll live eight I don't think I'll live eight years more to get it paid for. And I don't feel that I should have to put this onto my children. And I'm sure a lot of the other people that live there feel the same way. And I, you are the one that caused us stink right from the start. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Could you state your name, sir, and your address for the record?
My name is Ken Quentus, and I live at 2020 Chase Street.
Thank you.
And anytime you want to come over and talk to me, I'll be there.
Thank you. Uh, Alderperson Zerflu, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Special assessments aside, of course, um, I do agree with the public safety issue with sidewalks, especially in residential areas. You add onto that cars parking on the street, kids would have to walk around it. I think that makes sense. I think special assessments are a, a separate issue, but just speaking to the safety aspect, it's what I want to keep my comment to.
Uh, Alderperson Virginsky, you're next. You're next. Alderperson Virginsky, you're next.
Mayor, I just wanted to recognize, uh, the people that I represent in my ward. Uh, Mr. Quentus is one of them. Mr. Mansell is another one, and Mr. Hendrickson is another one. If they wish to speak, I would like to recognize them.
Uh, anybody wish to address the, the body at this time? Yes, sir, please come to the podium and introduce yourself with your address.
Gary Mansell, 2010 Chase Street.
Thank you.
It's like what Kenny said, you know, we, the wife says, well, we're gonna get a letter, or got a letter in January and from the engineering department, and that we're gonna have a meeting and we'll discuss this whole thing with you. Well, kept going and going and no meeting. Two weeks before they start the project, that's when we met down on Seventeenth and Chase, and then two engineers told us, this is what's gonna happen. I really think it's BS, because I even asked them to call and see if you would come down and if we could talk to you, but nothing happened. Far as these kids, I've been retired now six years, had two kids that walked by last winter for, for school, and then they got on the bus on Twenty-first and Chase Street. That was the only two kids I seen far as the school went. And my other deal that, when they redid Twenty-first Avenue about, I guess it was around eight or 10 years ago, they were gonna put sidewalk in then. And the people got together and it was dropped. Twenty-first is a busy street, too. And I guess what's ticking us off is why are we getting stuck with that sidewalk? It's, there's no other sidewalk, there's nothing on Nineteenth, Eighteenth. You know, it's, I just think it's BS. And far as the one up on Washington Street there, Mr. Rayom, my daughter lived up in that corner there, and I took care of the snow for her, and that's not far from Washington School. That new sidewalk they put in that I had to shovel or blow, I've never seen a track that whole winter on that sidewalk, and I was there at like, say, nine-thirty in the morning to clean that sidewalk off. And I thought, now, here you got a sidewalk, it is no tracks, nobody walked on it. That's, that's the same thing that's gonna happen over here on Chase. We're gonna have a sidewalk, we're gonna have to maintain it, and for what? I, I just, I think it's BS. My opinion is, if you want us to put a sidewalk in, then the city pay for it. Why, why, why should a homeowner have to pay for it and, and maintain it? I just think it's BS. You ain't getting my vote.
Thank you. Alderperson Kellogg, you're next.
I'm in favor of the sidewalks, is what Alderman Blazer and Alder, Alderman Rayom stated. Because of the student safety and just pedestrians in the area. But I live, where I live, next door is a young man who's handicapped. And we put sidewalks on the east side of town, I think it was two years ago, because there were seniors in mo- um, mobilized wheelchairs and so forth that were going in the streets, and we had to put sidewalks in for that. So it's, it's not just children, it's handicap. And, and people will be moving, and if someone moves and someone moves in that area that's handicapped, how are they gonna get around the neighborhood? Um, so I think this moratorium, um, and, and to cherry pick Chase Street, or this street, or that street, you just can't have the moratorium on all streets. And, and I think you have to look at it in that perspective, but I think children, handicap, uh, the appearance of neighborhoods, and, and people are gonna move and kids will be moving, uh, moving into that neighborhood, and then, oh, now we talk about it. Well, you didn't talk about it years ago. So, um, I'm in favor of the, I understand, for example, in my neighborhood, we have sidewalks, and we're replacing mini slabs. I have like six or seven slabs in front of my house. I'm gonna have to pay $2,000 or so just to replace those slabs. And my neighbors are the same way. They're calling me with regard to that. But that's the way it is, and that's the way we've done it, and I don't see why we change now because of a street. I think we have to have this, uh, concept and keep it intact.
Are there other requests to speak? About a, Alderperson Kubasak?
I'll, I'll, I will yield my five minutes, anybody else said, if there is anybody else in the audience.
Anyone in the, uh, audience wish to address the body on this matter? Yes, ma'am, come to the podium. Introduce yourself, if you give us your name and your address. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Wayland, and I live at 211 Fifteenth Avenue North, and I am a professional dog walker. And I have children, and, uh, they often walk around the city, ride their bikes around the city, um, walk to work, um, over at IGA. I use the sidewalks all over the city, um, and I really appreciate when they're maintained, and I appreciate when they're there so that, um, I don't have to be walking out on the street. Um, it's really definitely an issue in the winter, um, and I really appreciate when people maintain their sidewalks and they're well-kept. I would hate to see a sidewalk moratorium. That, that really caught my attention as being something that, um, seems out of place with a city that is moving forward and um, wants to attract more young families and, you know, how, we have a lot of, um, retiring people and, you know, we want people to be walking. It's healthy for them, um, they can see wonderful aspects of our city, and so I just want to say that, you know, I definitely don't want to see a sidewalk moratorium, so, thank you.
Uh, seeing no further requests to speak, we've got a motion, a second on the floor. Are there any other requests to speak for the final time? Alderpersons? Motion is, um, if I could have the clerk read back the motion as she was able to capture it.
The motion is to continue with sidewalk installation throughout the city as normal, specifically for the Chase Street project.
Thank you. Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, one nay, one abstention.
Thank you. We'll move on to item D, which is the Public Works Committee meeting on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Alderperson Kubasak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Public Works Committee meet, uh, Public Works Committee met at 5:33 PM on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Uh, Thaddeus Kubasak, Vernon, uh, Virginsky were present, Tom Rayom was absent. Uh, others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item number one, called to order, the meeting was called at, uh, 5:33 PM. Item number two, review and consider approval of a lump sum contract with Ramble, uh, O'Brien, and Jir Engineers Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $66,300 for the design and approval of a rail extension design, uh, to service the Metallico Development. Motion by Kubasak, second by Virginsky to a lump sum contract with Ramble at a cost not to exceed $66,300. Um, motion carried two to zero. Item number three adjourned, uh, motion by Kubasak, second by Virginsky to adjourn the meeting. Motion carried two to zero, meeting adjourned at 5:46 PM, and with that, I'll, uh, ask for approval.
Motion to approve by Kubasak, is there a, uh, second by Zerflu? Um, any requests to speak? Alderperson Kubasak.
Thank you, Your Honor. One thing that I want to talk about, because normally I'm kind of, I guess, uh, reluctant on spending, with this particular situation, this $66,300 is TIF eligible? If we remember, we approved a TIF, uh, or TID district, um, for tax increment financing for this project, and this is an item that, uh, I was confirmed by Engineering Department, although this was a, a referral that kind of fell into their laps, but the $66,300 should be recouped in future tax increment, uh, funds for that.
Seeing no further requests to speak, motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item E, the Human Resources Committee meeting held on October eighth.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The Human Resource Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October eighth, in the first-floor conference room. All, uh, all attendees are on file in the clerk's office. Um, the meeting was called to order at 5:01. Uh, the second item was to update the employee engage, an update on the employee engagement focus group. Uh, the focus groups are scheduled for this weekend at the end of the month. Item three was a motion by Zerflu, second by Kellogg, to go into closed sess- session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C of the Wisconsin State statutes, which reads, "Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility." A real call vote taken and with all members voting in the affirmative. That motion carried. In closed session, the committee reviewed alignment of the municipal court clerk who is currently is not placed in the existing pay grade. Uh, there was a motion, or item four, where there was a motion by Zerflu, second by Kellogg, to return to open session, and that motion carried three ayes and zero nays. Motion by Zerflu, second by Kellogg, to place the municipal court clerk at grade five, step six, effective the first pay period after council approval. Motion carried three ayes and zero nays. Uh, update on the HR Director recruitment and consider recommendation on interim, on interim responsibilities. Uh, the position has been posted. Motion by Zerflu, second by Blazer, to seek proposals for interim human resource consultant services. Motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item six was set elected official salaries for the upcoming spring term. It was moved by Blazer, second by Kellogg, to set the municipal court judge salary at $16,753 for the term beginning May first, two thousand twenty, with the, with the position receiving regular cost of living increases that general non-employees receive on January first of each year of the term. That motion carried three ayes and zero nays, and just to let you know that, that the salary hat wasn't increased, um, it's the same with cost of living. Um, then there was a motion by Blazer, second by Zerflu, to not increase the mayor and Alderperson's salaries for the spring two thousand twenty term. That motion carried three ayes and zero nays. Item seven was review and consider for approval a temporary intern for the mayor's office. Motion by Zerflu, second by Blazer, to approve the hiring of an intern for the mayor's office at a pay rate of $12 per hour. That motion carried three ayes and zero nays. The next meeting, uh, date is set for November twelfth at 5:00 PM. A motion by Zerflu, second by Blazer, to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin State statute, which reads, "Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, and conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session." In closed session, the committee received an update and discussed strategy regarding negotiations with IAAF and WRPPA. A motion by Zerflu, second by Blazer, to adjourn in closed session at 7:00 PM, and with that, I submit the report for adoption.
A motion to approve by Blazer, uh, and a second by Zerflu. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Kubasak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to hold out items three and nine, uh, because they're closed session, and we'll add those to the end of the meeting along with the other closed session. If I gotta suspend the rules or whatever, that's what I'm asking.
Is there any objection to, uh, holding those items out?
Would we need to hold out item four, because that's the action?
Any objection to, uh, holding out essentially four and nine? Did I hear, uh, is there a question?
No, I don't, I don't have a objection to that, certainly. Um, there was no action taken on nine, though? I guess I'm just confused.
Yeah, there's no action on there, but just in case that there is any questions on it, so.
Good, okay.
Hearing no objection, those items will, uh, be withheld. Alderperson Rayom? Or is yours?
Your Honor, I'll listen to whatever in closed session on some of whatever we go into, but, uh, um, I, I'm, I, I'm not disagreeing with what the men have said again, because they, they say what they say, but I disagree with what action that was taken, and I, uh, just for myself, I'm gonna, I'll vote no. So we don't have a whole heck of a lot more discussion. I'm just gonna vote no, so. On the committee, on the, on, against the report. Because I, I think at some point in time, at some point in time, instead of just saying no even to wages and that type of stuff, what we pay people, is that at some point in time, because it sounds good. But we only do that to ourselves. I think we have to hold everybody to that. We have to hold everybody with this, that works for this community to that. It sounds good when we say we're not gonna pay ourselves. And that's an easy one to get around. But I think at some point in time, there has to be discussion on it. And that's why I oppose the report. And it's, for those that have been here for a while, know that it's not a brand-new issue of mine. We can sound good and pay yourselves nothing. And that's what you're gonna get. Thank you.
Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, we've got items three and four and nine withheld from the report with a motion to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
Uh, we'll go to, so we're gonna hold those other items for closed session? Is that what I understand, or, okay. Uh, item F, sixteen F, Legislative Committee meeting on September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
The Legislative Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, Sept- Sept- September seventeenth. Um, I, list of attendees are in the clerk's office. Uh, the meeting was called to order at 4:32 PM. Item two was consider an ordinance prohibiting the feeding of waterfall on city property. Motion by Rayom, second by Blazer, to refer to the common council and ordinance banning the feeding of waterfall on public property. That motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item three was review and consider the adoption, the adoption of an amendment to the well abatement ordinance moving the program to Waterworks and Lighting Commission. It was moved by Kubasak, second by Blazer, to postpone this matter to the next legislative committee meeting. That motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item four is review and discuss policies relating to the taping and broadcasting of city meetings. Motion by Kubasak, second by Blazer, to postpone this matter to the next legislative committee meeting. That motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item five is consider a referral from Alderperson Rayom for the study of all committee commissions, et cetera, regarding their duties, number of members, whether members are residents of Wisconsin Rapids or not, meeting dates, and times. Motion by Kubasak, second by Rayom, to postpone this matter till the next legislative committee meeting, and that motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Consider amending, item six was consider amending the number of items needed to trigger a Legislative Committee meeting. It was moved by Kubashak, Kubashak, second by Rayom, to postpone this matter to the next Legislative Committee meeting. Motion carried, three ayes, zero nays. Item seven was to adjourn, and we did actually adjourn at 5:40 PM. Motion by, three ayes, zero nays. And submit that for approval.
Got a motion by Blazer. Is there a second? Second by Coth. Any requests to speak on the Legislative Committee meeting? Seeing none, the motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 17, reports of other committees, commissions, and boards, departmental reports. Item A, the Park and Recreation Commission meeting on September 9th. Item B, the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority meetings on June 26th, July 31st, first and second meetings on August 15th and 28th. Item C, the Southwood County Airport Commission meeting on September 5th. Item D, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly summary for September. Item E, the Mayor's Youth Council meetings on July 10th, August 14th, and September 11th. And item F, the Waterworks and Lighting Commission regular meeting on September 11th and special meeting on September 17th. And item G, the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on October 8th. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
Motion by Coth, is there a second? Second by Zurflu. Any other discussion or requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Do we wait for Bud?
Can somebody hit the confirm button? Or did he not vote? Oh, gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I suppose. Unless we just have the minutes reflect that he was absent for this particular item. Yeah, we can have the, the minutes reflect that he was absent for this particular item. But we need to somehow clear that remote. Yeah, I was going to say, maybe hit the abstention, and we'll just have the minutes reflect that that's not actually the case, unless he's... Sure. With a motion by Kubashak and a second by Zurflu to move, actually to close the vote with Alderperson Virginsky being absent for the vote. Well, right, we're in the middle of vote. That's the problem about taking a motion during the vote.
If I could just run down there quick and see where he's at and let him know.
Okay. Do you have a question, Alderperson Kellogg? Yeah.
I don't have a question, but I was going to make a comment at the end, so maybe I'll make it now while we wait. What bothers me, we have our first-floor conference room, and it's, it's an incidental thing, but it's hot. And we, the thermostat's out here. And it seems like during the winter months now, I mean, we have visitors coming to Public Works or others. And it's like, if we're going to use that room, then let's use it with conditions that are appropriate for a number of people to be in that room. So I'd like to have some recommendation, referral, whatever it be, to have that looked at within the next couple of months and rectified so that it's just kind of embarrassing we're sitting there with all the meetings we have. So it's just a, a comment, and maybe it can be referred to someone dealing with that issue. So while we're waiting, I thought I'd share that.
Duly noted. Thank you, Scott. It's a staff referral, the building maintenance, so it's not really a referral to committee or anything. It's a staff referral.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 18, reading of written referrals of communication to committees. Madam Clerk, or Alderperson Blazer? I'll go to the clerk first. Just referral, communication.
Alderperson Rayom made a referral to the Park and Recreation Commission to establish a master plan to redevelop Robinson Park with the assistance from an ad hoc committee.
Alderperson Blazer?
That's, I guess, given the, the vote at the airport, I'd like to make a referral to discuss having entered, entered a governmental agreement to provide services. Because that, the airport, it was voted down, and I think we need to, the annexation, it probably goes to Public Works, I think, would it? To provide sewer, water and sewer to the airport.
Unless it's a contract in which it would go through Finance and Property.
Either, I guess whichever committee, but I think it's something we should discuss.
Okay. The requests to speak. Seeing none, I'll move into item 19, adjournment.
Um.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I'll move to go into closed session, Your Honor.
Uh, I should probably read the part here. An open session, the, the council may vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, "Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session." In closed session, the committee will discuss, the council will discuss the purchase of, in closed session, the committee may discuss, the purchase of, council may discuss purchase of vacant land. So we're going to go into open, out of open? Yeah? Okay. So we'll start with that one. Negotiations and municipal court clerk. I entertain a motion to go into closed. Got a motion by Zurflu. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Coth. To go into closed session. Motions to go into closed, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
So then, motion is to go into open? If you could just cast your ballots on your remotes? No, that's good. Kubashak and Blazer? All right, we're ready now. Sure. That's fine. I might sell the lots off of 25th, just because they've got the utilities in the street.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Okay, so then that brings us into open session. Item three and four, three was the closed session portion of that, which I will read the committee, or in this case, the council may vote to go into closed session pursuant to section 19.85, parent one, parent C of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, "Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility." In closed session, the council will review alignment of the municipal court clerk, who currently is not placed in an existing pay grade. Item four, the committee will vote to return to open session, but, so in this case, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed. A motion by Zurflu, is there a second? Second by Kubashak. Motions to go into closed, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.